The May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four City of Vandelia Council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes and the meeting minutes of May sixth, along with the council retreat minutes of May eighth. Are there any comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Ward. And we have a proclamation for our Public Works Department. So if you can join me at the podium.
Whereas the public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital of importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Vandelia. Whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees of at all levels of government and of the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas, it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Vandelia to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the sixty-fourth Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, as National Public Works Week.
Congratulations. Thanks.
You want to say anything?
I would just say thanks for the proclamation. And the word I'd say out to residents and businesses alike is, if you see the workers out there, please wave, say hello, give a smile. They do work really hard, our crews and our staff. So if you happen to see out there doing their job, please thank them for their work and their service. Thank you.
We certainly do appreciate them, because I don't think there's any resident in the City of Vandelia that doesn't drive by them in sub-zero temperatures while they're trying to fix a water main break, thinking, oh, my God, that's the last place I want to be right now. So we do appreciate that. Thanks.
Oops, sorry. Let me turn my mic on. Next, we have the introduction of an Assistant Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. If Mr. JR Fulton, if you'd just go ahead and stand up, I really appreciate you coming out tonight. JR started with us on May sixth. He took over as the Assistant Public Works Superintendent when Mr. Heslett was promoted after Mr. Ritchie's retirement. Mr. Fulton, one of the things that sticks out from the first interview that I had with him, which was when he interviewed to be a public works technician some months back, he mentioned that in his entire career, he's always been promoted. That's correct. I think if you get a chance to spend time with JR, it's very apparent very quickly that he is a person of very high intelligence and exceptional work ethic. I would suppose that the people in JR's life would talk about his commitment to work and self-sufficiency, and that kind of shines through in his way of being. He's been an operating and maintenance technician with Veolia, where at some point, he had worked with Mr. Heslett, and Mr. Heslett got an idea of JR's work ethic. He'd been a sales specialist at Lowe's, a cable technician and subcontractor with Direct TV, and operations manager at Lowe's, and a co-manager at eighty-four lumber. And so with all of that combined experience, it's easy to see that not only does he master different bodies of information, but also that also he's pretty handy. Another thing about Mr. Fulton is that he's a Navy veteran, and like many of some of our best employees, served in the Navy, just like Mrs. Schwartz. And so he also is an electronics technician through Belmont Technical College. And so those are some of his qualifications. He's off to an excellent start at the Public Works Division. And so we just look forward to and are excited to have you on board. So thank you for coming and welcome.
All right. Welcome, JR.
Glad to have you.
All right. Next, we have the introduction and oath of office for a firefighter, paramedic, inspector.
Yes, Mr. Schneider. I'd ask you just to go ahead and stand up here. And Joshua is a firefighter, paramedic, inspector. He joined us full-time on May first and has been with us for a couple of years. So he's a Vandelia resident. We're excited to welcome him on board. And with that, I'll invite Joshua and Captain Garver and the rest of the crew to come on up for a swearing.
Nice and high. We want you to look right. I, Joshua Schneider solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Ohio, that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Vandelia, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of firefighter, paramedic, inspector within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations. Thanks. Welcome to have.
If anybody was here for the presentations and you wanted to leave, we would not be offended. But this is a public meeting, and you're absolutely welcome to stay.
Bye, Chief. Yeah, their mind was already made up. All right. We have no public hearing tonight, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Eric Kerker, six-six-nine-zero Homestretch Road.
What was your name again?
Eric Kerker. There we go.
Okay.
I'm quite sorry we weren't present at the last council meeting as we were out of the country. However, we were also under the impression that the issue of the hotel had been resolved. I'm also disappointed that I missed my fifteen minutes of fame as Mr. Jerry Smith seemed to dedicate most of his time to using my last name. If I understand correctly, based on the fact that Mr. Lewis was not present at the original vote and the comments by Mr. Smith, the council passed a motion to allow further discussion on the hotel project. I doubt that I can ask Mr. Lewis to step out in the hall for the next vote, so I would like to address Mr. Smith's comments instead. To start, it was confusing watching the video of the last council meeting of who Jerry Smith is. Much of the time, he sounded like he worked for Choice Hotels. He also said, "My property", and he said he owns property nearby. The property in question is owned by Ministry Partners Investment Company, a California-based investment firm. Choice Hotels has not purchased the property, at least based on County Auditor's website. I can find no other property on the County Auditor site owned by Ministry Partners, Jerry Smith, or Apex. So to be clear, Mr. Smith might have worked for the realtors that sold the property to Ministry Partners. If so, his company was paid probably somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-three thousand dollars to sell that property. If he didn't sell the property to Ministry Partners, then he is purely the realtor that is trying to sell the property to Choice Hotels. In that case, the paycheck to Apex is over a hundred thousand dollars. Council members, please let that sink in. He was paid to be here. His comments that reopen the issue are not based on what is best for the community. They're based on what's best for him and for Apex. What's worse is I believe the council may have been partially confused, as I was, about who this guy is. The council asked direct questions about Choice Hotels' ten-year drawdown and other issues of corporate decision-making. Mr. Smith had no business whatsoever answering those questions about what Choice Hotels is going to do in the near term or in the future. He doesn't work for Choice Hotels. And Choice Hotels has no obligation to this city council to honor any of the conditions or answers, Mr. Smith stated. Mr. Folic, unfortunately, he's not here, said this was the first time he'd heard some of this information in the last meeting. That's just it. I don't think you actually heard any substantiated information, and I'll do my best to back that up with verifiable facts. The funny part is, we bought our property from the same realty group. They have changed names four or five times since then, but it's the same guys. So they were paid thousands of dollars when we bought our first parcel from, first parcel of the Cybert land and six buildings. The realtor lied to my face on the deal. There were still about fifteen acres for sale. This is before Sunbelt. The realtor told me that the seller would not subdivide the property. I had to buy it all at eighty-five thousand an acre. I watched the property sit abandoned for another year and then called the landowner, Mike Cybert, who owns Circuits and Cables here in Vandelia, directly. I told him what the realtors said, and Mike Cybert said, "What? Heck, I'll sell you a square foot. I don't care. You just measure out what you want, make me an offer, and we'll go from there." That realtor, by the way, is also the senior vice president of Apex, just like Mr. Smith, Dave Tobson. When we bought the second parcel, parcel all the way to Webster Street, the same realtor still had a sign on Cybert's land, even though he had no current contract. I told Mike Cybert I wanted to buy the parcel, but that the realtor was not going to be part of the selling or the closing. If he wanted to pay them after the fact, that was up to him. If there had been a real estate contract, the title company would have forced the distribution proceeds at closing regardless, and that did not happen. Regardless, Mr. Smith was paid thousands of dollars for selling us the farm. We were his customer. In the last meeting, he said we had been here since nineteen-twenty, so I looked pretty good for a hundred and four years old. And he said that he felt sorry for us. He sold us the property, but now he feels sorry for us. We bought the property for very specific reasons. We still own the property, and we don't need pity for Mr. Smith. Apex still has a sign on the corner of Cybert's land, and they do not have a contract with them. The sign's been there roughly twenty years through multiple previous company names, but still Dave Tobson. Mr. Smith made the comment that the commission was only protecting one resident up the street. So I had stated in the planning commission meeting that I am the unofficial spokesperson for Sunbelt Rental, Lewisburg Container, and Progressive Printers, all of whom I've spoken to at length, and all of whom oppose this hotel. I believe the president of Progressive Printers has forwarded a letter or an email to council. Tyson, the manager of Sunbelt, was going to try to be here tonight. I don't think he made it. But you can easily contact him at Sunbelt tomorrow. Lon Chambers, the manager at Lewisburg Container, works sixty to eighty hours a week at the warehouse and then tends to his cattle farm. His main concerns are primarily the additional crime and the inevitable noise complaints about his loading docks. Feel free to contact him at the warehouse if you would like to verify his stance on this project. When I told Lon that Mr. Smith claimed to have talked to all the businesses here, he said, and I quote, "Have him come and say that to my face. Wouldn't be a good idea." Mr. Smith stated that he had spoken to local businesses and that the Kirkers were the only objectors. Mr. Smith has not spoken to Sunbelt Rentals, Progressive Printers, or Lewisburg Containers. I don't know about the Wright-Rug people. I don't know them very well, but their floor salesman did not know about the hotel. These are all of the properties most likely to be affected. Mr. Smith, by the way, did not mention a single business that he had spoken to by name in the last meeting. Mr. Smith stated that the Super Eight Hotel and the Knights Inn were designed to be cheap, short-stay hotels. He stated that Everhome Suites were designed to be top-of-the-food-chain hotels. Choice Hotels' corporate description is that Ever Suites are designed to be mid-range hotels. Mr. Smith said EPA faced two studies that had been done on that property, and that had been fully remediated. The truth is, the original house was knocked down years ago, but what was removed was only the building materials. I believe the basement walls are still buried there. There was some short-term test drilling done earlier this year, but there has been no remediation done on that property. Mr. Smith stated that the Kirkers complained about trucks. That statement's incorrect. So I stated for the record, wife and I lived on a sailboat for six years, and we're used to noisy environments. My statement about the trucks was for the benefit of the Choice Hotels people, who stated that they had done their research, and this was a good location. I told them they had a major traffic problem as their driveway is directly across the street from Sunbelt's driveway. Told them there were many trucks that use that driveway and Homestretch Road. I also mentioned that the truck traffic from the warehouses is a concern for their guests. I told them they had three major noise issues that their research did not identify. Lewisburg Container runs twenty-four hours a day, six to seven days a week, and their loading docks are very loud. Sunbelt Rental starts at seven AM, six days a week, and most of their equipment has loud, OSHA-required backup beepers. And the sheriff trains just over the hill can start shooting as early as five-thirty AM with large-caliber, loud weapons. Mr. Smith stated that this would be the most expensive property in the area. We've been told this is a ten-million-dollar project. Sunbelt Rental has an inventory in excess of fourteen million dollars, plus the value of their property. Lewisburg Container Warehouse holds thirty-six million millennial feet of finished cardboard containers. I guess that's more than ten million dollars. Plus, there can be twenty-four semi-trucks on the premises, adding to that value. Mr. Smith said it was a three-point-two-mile walk from Super Eight to our location, that he didn't think people in that area would walk past our property. It's actually a one-point-two-mile walk from the Knights Inn, just across Little York. If Mr. Smith would care to drive past that corner of Little York and the road where the Knights Inn is, he would see people walking in many directions from that location every morning, often carrying signs begging for help. Many cross the highway and walk down Miller Lane, some walk down Poe, others turn on Homestretch. Plus, we get unwanted foot traffic from the other extended hotel on Poe Avenue. Our property has been breached three times by people on foot from that direction, and there are police reports on all three. I have pictures today of two questionable individuals that walked past our property today. Speaking of the other extended hotel on Poe, Extended Stay Hotel on Poe, happens to be a Hawthorne Extended Stay Hotel owned by Wyndham. That hotel is a three-wood and a pitching wedge from the site in question. I'm curious what will happen to the Hawthorne Hotel when their business dries up. The Everbrand Suites was launched, the brand was launched January of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. The same report says that it is the first new mid-scale Extended Stay brand in nearly a decade, meaning that they have a target audience, meaning that they may have a target audience, but the brand is so new and so small that there isn't enough data to prove anything about who will actually frequent this hotel. Mr. Smith stated it would be a corporate-owned hotel, and that sets it apart from franchise hotels. May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, Everhome Suites, Corona, California, a reviewer wrote, and I've got copies of this for all you guys, "The staff and management don't care. Place is filthy and in disrepair. No housekeeping, no respect for customers." And it's a very long review. An article published April twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, Carly DeEon, I think that's how it's pronounced, in Columbus, Ohio. From Columbus, Ohio Legal Newsline, more than forty individual human trafficking lawsuits have been filed against hotel companies through attorney Stephen Babbitt. That's also a very long article. March fourteen, twenty-twenty-four, Keach's Law Group files suit against Choice Hotels on behalf of sex trafficking victim in Massachusetts. Okay. I find the clerk of courts records to be extremely useful in separating fact from fiction. In a very short study of the clerk of courts records from Montgomery, Franklin, Hamilton, Cuyahoga, and Summit Counties, I found a hundred and eight lawsuits on record, twenty-two associated with Choice Hotels, thirteen were associated with Woolport. The rest of the hundred and eight were a search of three brands, three of their brands, Quality Inn, Comfort Suites, and WoodSpring. Choice Hotels has twenty-two brands, and Ohio has eighty-eight counties. So the hundred and eight lawsuits are a very small cross-section of what's actually out there. And every bit of this is public record. I didn't make this stuff up. This is an extremely troubling piece of information, published in the Democracy Digest, May fourteen, twenty-twenty-four in Georgia. In quotes, "Court decided Extended Stay Hotel guests are legal residents with eviction protections." Think about that. It might not be law here yet, but you can bet it will be eventually. Vandelia is just a few miles from a sanctuary city. That means no matter how bad or disruptive or non-paying a customer is, you might be stuck with them for months. We found many articles, some written by law firms, some insurance companies, and one written by a crime scene cleanup company, saying that Extended Stay Hotels, by their very nature, draw more crime. Housekeeping may only be scheduled in and of the room once a week, and even that interval may be waived off. They typically have much smaller staffs. They have higher incidence of human trafficking, more frequent illegal drug use, manufacturing methamphetamine, and staging points for home invasion, especially when located near major highway systems. To Mr. Lewis's comment that he drives past that corner and would like to see it developed, I agree. We're sick of smelling the campfires, the underzables walking by down the street to camp, watching product move from car trunk to someone hiding in the brush, and the city has to be pretty sick of mowing it as well. And even though this is going to be a cookie-cutter hotel, it's the same hundred-and-fourteen-room design that's planned for, it depends how you read their website. They say sixty-six, but I think only ten of them are actually Ever Suites, but it's the same hundred-and-fourteen-room design. It'd probably look pretty good, but that's not the issue. It's what happens behind closed doors in the dark of night that troubles us and the companies we speak for. Keep in mind that one person we are counting on day and night to make sure all is well is a fourteen-dollar-an-hour front-desk clerk. There won't be full-time corporate presence in this hotel. There might not be any security at all, and even if there is security and there is corporate presence, they can't enter a room without a major disturbance having happened. So on a daily basis, nobody knows what's going on inside the hotel until it escalates to the point of drawing major attention. Hundred-and-fourteen rooms of unknown individuals doing pretty much anything they please, protected by privacy rights and the desire of Choice Hotels not to get bad press. This is just a sample of what happens on, or has happened on Homestretch Road. May eighth, Wednesday before last, the man who does lawn care for Progressive Printers had loaded up his tractor on his trailer, behind his truck, grabbed his weed eater and went around to weed eat their building, and at one forty-five in the afternoon, minutes after he walked away from that truck, it was gone. About a month before that, Ryan Livsay, that's the president of Progressive Printers, notified me that he had found five full fork-truck propane tanks hidden on his property. Propane is now used to make methamphetamine instead of ether. A lady that works there that walks her dog on the property said she has seen tanks there before, but they always disappear after a short time. Last year, we heard loud banging late at night and found two people beating one of Progressive presses to pieces. It was set outside their loading dock to salvage usable parts from. The same individual had been chased off the property previously. Once police arrived, they found one of the individuals had outstanding warrants, and he was taken to jail. Before that, a very ugly individual with no visible front teeth and continually scratching his arms came between our buildings and got all the way to our front door walkway before I stopped him. The guy smelled so bad that my normally protective hundred-and-five-pound hound lab went under the porch. Once I got this guy off the property, I called Ryan at Progressive, and sure enough, he was on their cameras as having tried to get in every door of the building. I'd also alerted the Vandelia Police to his presence. So what would the city council say if I requested zoning variance for the same property to put up a beautiful casino? Or a beautiful strip club? Or a beautiful check-cashing loan business? You would politely say no, because any reasonably prudent person can easily predict that these businesses bring trouble that the city doesn't need. I think Extended Stay Hotels, regardless of how nice they are, share the same similar predictable uncontrollable outcome. In conclusion, the potential buyer, excuse me, Choice Hotels, the potential buyer, and Mr. Smith, the representative of Apex Realtors, the seller, have told the council that they have spent a lot of money on this and what it is they're going to build. They claim that their target guests will be upstanding professionals, and there won't be any problems. They have not told the council exactly what they tend to do to protect themselves and the community from the bad apples that will eventually show up. They certainly haven't talked to any of the property owners or business managers about how they can make this project safe for the neighborhood. I think the Vandelia Police, who already make three-hundred-and-seventy-five calls a year to existing hotels, should also be given consideration in this deliberation. In the last meeting, it was mentioned something to the effect that Vandelia has provisions in place to deal with the problems. That means a call to the police, who are statistically most likely to already be one of the other hotels. I contend that it is the duty of the council and the permanent residents of Vandelia and her loyal businesses and business managers not to allow a known potential problem to enter our fair city. And I can't help but point out the irony of the very next speaker after Mr. Smith was a gentleman here to complain about hotel. John Irving could not have written that ending. Thank you.
Thanks for the information. I believe, sure. I believe that Choice Hotels is going to be here on June third for a presentation. That will be an open meeting. And we'll get a copy of this to everyone on council. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor, while the gentleman approaches the podium, if you would like, I can scan that and send it to everyone electronically and place copies in your mailboxes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Good evening. My name is Steve Poncheck. I live at four-eighteen Woodland Meadows Drive. And my comments, questions, and concerns revolve around the proposal of the restaurant at the golf course. Because this now will include a liquor license. Is that correct?
No, it already has a liquor license.
Whose name is on the liquor's license?
City of Vandelia. We discussed this in our study session. I'm not sure, were you here when we?
I didn't think I'm allowed to be at the study session.
No, it's an open meeting. No, it's an open meeting. Everyone can.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was strictly for the council members. I don't want to be redundant here, but, so is the city liable for any alcohol-related mishaps?
We'll let the, I defer to the law director to, kind of what we went over before.
Yeah, we did discuss that. They would be managing under our license. They would have to have the sufficient insurance and things like that. And generally, no, we wouldn't be liable for their misdeeds, other than, no, we wouldn't be liable for those types of liquor violations.
Does the city already have an existing relationship with a liquor license?
It sells liquor at Castle Hills now.
Pardon?
It sells liquor at Castle Hills now.
We have our own liquor license at Castle Hills Golf Course to sell liquor.
Okay, all right, then that takes care of that. My other question is, was this proposal offered to any of our local establishments that have experience in running restaurants? Say Bunkers, Little York Tavern?
I defer to our city manager. I believe we have spoken with several people.
I've shown several people who were interested in looking at it five or six times. I've not reached out to restaurants in particular to see if they wanted to expand a satellite. However, the two applicants who represent the organization are Vandelia residents who took interest in it.
Meaning those are, are they permanent residents here, or do they have dual residency?
I'm not aware of any other residency statuses. I know that Mr. Royce identified as growing up in Vandelia and I think has lived close to the golf course since before it was a golf course, is how he described it.
Okay. So who shares in the profits? Is that the city, or is it this interim manager?
The city is not party to the profits.
So what does the city gain out of this?
You know, Mayor, this is, this is questions and comments. I'm happy to do this if that's the direction of council that you want to do. We have given presentations about this, and so I'm happy to continue doing this. I know that we have this on the agenda. I'll just go through if you want me to give the general presentation.
I don't want to bore other people with this, but yes, I, you know, I just, I'm just curi, I just happened to see it on the meeting minutes of last month when it came up as a draft in a proposal.
We have a facility, and we're looking to try to add more value to our residents, and this is an opportunity that we might be able to accomplish that.
But now, but it'll also put you in direct competition with all the other establishments around here. You'll be, you want places like Bunkers and Little York Tavern and Frickers, they will no longer be your business partners. They will be your business competitors.
I will say the feedback that I've gotten from the applicants who who were considering, it's before council for consideration, have said that they have been in contact with business proprietors who have actually wished them luck and said that the more things that there are to do in the area that bring people to the area, especially from outside, the better it is for everybody's business, is what's been shared with me. I will say, and I'll echo the mayor's sentiment, that our goal at the city, especially with a business type of revenue, is just that, to try to run it as a business and still provide, really at Castle Hills Golf Course, affordable golf that is accessible to people. One of the ways surrounding COVID that we were able to reduce expenses and increase cost recovery was largely by cutting out services related to the restaurant, that being that while the city can do ineffective and maybe neutral revenue job at that, by reducing staffing and reducing those services and mostly closing the restaurant, we were able to have a better cost recovery from a budget standpoint, but maybe not provide the best experience that we could for golfers or members of the community who want to walk or drive to enjoy that restaurant. And so the idea was bring somebody in who wants to be a restaurant proprietor and try that out and see how that works. I think the proposal for right now is a trial period that would go through the summer into December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and then the parties would have the opportunity to regroup and see if it still makes sense to continue doing business together.
Because the golfing season is pretty much maybe April, May through maybe October, maybe a little bit November. So is the current restaurant shut down during the off months of December, January, February, and March?
The restaurant is not running, just the snack bar is.
Yeah, okay. Well, as I see it, there are more restaurants closing in this area than opening. I mean, even in Vandelia proper, we no longer have Oscars, Vandelia Rib House, Stubby's Burger King, and we heard this morning that Red Lobster's filed for bankruptcy. So I guess I don't see where the big gain or where the influx of more restaurant patrons, where that's coming from. Because all these other restaurants, including Miller Lane, are fighting for that restaurant dollar. So I guess I don't see where this restaurant is going to pick up more when they can't get it.
They're targeting the current clientele that is at the golf course.
Okay, that's fine during the golf season.
Right. So the jury's still out on how many people would go to Castle Hills to eat that has no interest in golf. It's primarily going to be, from what my understanding.
Castle Hills is kind of out of the way of everything else.
Right.
I mean, at least Bunkers or Little York Tavern, they're in the mainstream of the area. And then you have, of course, The Monster on Miller Lane. So I guess I just don't see the value or the viability of opening up a new restaurant.
Well, everything is market-driven, and if there's an entrepreneur out there that wants to do it.
But according to the draft, we, they have to have fifty thousand dollars to do it?
If that's what they need, that's maybe what they need. They'll, we'll figure that out as we go.
That would be an alone, if they get that, it would be an alone matter. I'm sorry.
It would be a loan to them.
Okay.
And we wouldn't be subsidizing them. That's probably the benefit to the city.
We have very little risk in this.
So they would, they would have to go to a private lender for their?
They may apply to the Vandelia Development Corporation.
Is that city money?
But it's, it's still a loan. Yeah, yes.
Yes.
It is. We're gonna, yeah. I think we discussed earlier, we ended up, we did get a second draft earlier with a different option to.
So will that be published?
Yes, yes, that'll, it should be, right? The second option should be out? Was it not in the agenda?
It is. It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, the new agenda? Okay. So yeah, so there's one option with it, with the loan, and then there's one without the loan, or the option to go to another way to get the money. So they have that as well. So, yeah.
Having been a golfer, I see nothing wrong with just a hot dog hamburger, soft drink stand that runs during the golf season, and as long as it pays for itself, you know, because if you're going to make any more profit than that, that's got to come from the expense of your other restaurants in the area.
Well, again, I think this is going to a different market and toward those golfers that are looking for maybe one, one better selection of food.
But that'll only be a limited time per year, for the year.
True, and that's their, their model, their business model. So they, they understand that, they risk that, and so they, they looked forward to doing that based on their business model.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Donnie Donovan, five fifteen Damian Street. I was here at the workshop. I just want to make sure this gets put into council. I'm not sure how it operates, but that you do research that there is a restaurant on wheels operating in a residential zone, parking every single morning, every single night. I have to look at it.
All of your comments from the previous study session will be part of the minutes.
And then I just wanted to thank you all. I would still like to get the answer about parking in front of your approach, which I can't.
We'll get that to you.
Okay. And then I would like to add to his comment. Why is the city, why is the city giving this away? Why don't you put up a bid? Someone bids to get to do this. We make money. There's a moneymaker there. I know a lot of companies, Little York Tavern, people might pay money to serve their individual, small pizzas and beer and stuff. We're missing out. We're just somebody's, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right. Where was I? City manager's report. We have some information items. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'd like to inform you that Neighborhood Beautification Day is Saturday, June eighth, twenty twenty-four, from nine AM to noon. We'll be working on Bristol, Colebrook, Denora, Enola, Foley, North Brown School Road, Roxanna, Spartan, and West Haver. The, we have a lot of volunteers who are from GE Aviation who will be assisting city staff, as well as employees from Rumpke who will be participating. I know the Division of Fire will also be out in the neighborhood, kind of doing visits and swapping out batteries in smoke detectors. The last two weeks have been extremely busy, and also we have two very exciting recruitments which are going on. One is the Recreation Superintendent, who I anticipate will eventually move into the Parks Director role. We've narrowed that down to about six finalists. We'll conduct those interviews this week and next week. It's a very qualified pool. And also, we have a very qualified pool for the Human Resources Manager recruitment, recruitment that is going on. And so there are three finalists who will do a final interview on in two weeks, who all have local government HR experience. And so we're very excited for that. And thank you to all the staff who have participated in that to help advise that process. Last week, I participated in the Dayton Development Coalition fly-in. I had meetings with congressional staffers from the offices of Senator Brown and Senator Vance, and I look forward to getting one of those staffers out to the Tri-City's Wastewater Treatment Plant in the coming weeks. Primarily, our purpose for that was to discuss congressionally-directed spending for the wastewater authority, and then also in park and rec, as well as sharing other issues. City offices will be closed on May twenty-seventh for Memorial Day. The Rec Center will be open from seven AM to noon for the fitness area track and gymnasium only. Although we have the summer schedule that we've established, we'll hold a meeting, which will be a special meeting, on Monday, June third, at five fifteen, and that will be to consider the conditional use for the hotel. Then we'll resume our regular schedule, which is June seventeenth at seven PM. I just want to make sure there's nothing else I haven't shared here that I would like to share with you. I, I think that is the, I think that's all that I'd like to share today. Thank you.
All right. We have no action items, nor do we have any old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-five. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution awarding the bid for the Art Park Amphitheater Project requested by Parks and Recreation to Outdoor Enterprise at the lowest and best bid of four hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The Parks and Recreation Department is recommending awarding a bid for the Art Park Amphitheater Project to Outdoor Enterprises of Troy, Ohio, because of their overall best bid proposal for the project on April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. We publicly opened and read proposals received for the project. This was advertised in the Daily Court Reporter on March fifteenth and March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. This project will allow for the construction of an amphitheater stage, bandshell, and additional seating at Art Park. The project is the continuation of developing the Art Park into a centralized location for residents to gather for community-level activities, as indicated in the twenty-twenty Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Community Input Key Findings Section of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Three contractors obtained the bid package through Bid Express, and all three submitted bids for the project. Bids ranged from four hundred ninety thousand, five hundred dollars to six hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. OHM Advisors estimated that the project would be five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Funding for the project includes grant funds in the amount of three hundred thousand from the State of Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for capital budget funds.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-four R thirty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Council, Vice Mayor Blakesley, and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-five. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember first?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes five zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-six.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an FPA project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding ODOT Project MOT Poe Weiss-Miller, RSFPID number twelve fifteen ninety-nine.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. On March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city received official notice that the Poe Weiss-Miller resurfacing project was successfully funded through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Surface Transportation Program for eight hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars of federal funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. This project is estimated at one million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. With the successful award of grant funds, the city needs to enter into a local public agency or LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to receive these federal funds.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-four R thirty-six as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Faris, and a second by Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-six as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Faris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries five zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a management agreement for the interim operation under the city liquor license at the Castle Hills Golf Course.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Presented on this in the workshop as well, and we've talked about this at a couple of meetings at this point. At the Macek Study Session, Director Clark gave his presentation, and we worked on the revision. In between the meetings, I had shared kind of the red line version that removed the clause relating to any sort of revenue sharing due to bonding, doing, due to bonding issues and restraints that we have. This proposal is for a one-dollar lease until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It, kind of in response to why is it, and how did you determine a one-dollar lease being available? I had talked with one of the proprietors, Mr. Chris Royce, about this, and I think he did sum it up very well. He said, Dan, if you've shown this to, this opportunity to a bunch of potential entrepreneurs and nobody's bitten on it, he said, you don't know that it can actually make money, and the lease is actually worth only one dollar, was his comment to me on that. And, and that is something that has stuck with me and made me comfortable with this recommendation. I will share with you that in this resolution, I would just ask for clarification and it to be read into the minutes. At the, at the last page, there are two alternate last pages, one that has number fifteen, which is this contingency, and the other version does not have fifteen, the contingency that includes making, directing city funds fifty thousand dollars to the VDC for their consideration of whether to grant and to administer a loan that would be paid back by Diff Inc. to the VDC, which would have to come up with its own separate, with its own separate regulations about how it would do that. Also, I would point out that kind of last minute last week, the law director. do that. Also, I would point out that kind of last minute last week, the law director and Parks Director discussed pre-existing bookings in number 14. And so, that's just to say, hey, there are pre-existing bookings, and when we execute the agreement, should council wish to move forward, that we would stipulate what those are so that we know that those are coming. Also, the... One of the applicants, one of the proprietors, Mr. Connor Royce is here. Should you have any questions for him?
Anyone have any questions for Connor while he's here?
Yeah, as far as the direction, I believe we said at the workshop that we would have the VDC take that direction. So, it would be version 2, I believe, that is minus number 15. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, that's the direction for version 2, minus the...
Number 15.
Number 15.
Okay.
Your Honor, and so, what I would just request from that, should city council want to move forward with a motion, then I would just respectfully suggest that, you know, a motion to approve Resolution 24-R-37 with the stipulation that the loan not be included in the version of the contract that is proposed to DIF Inc., knowing that that's included in our exhibits.
Got it.
Obviously, that was my comment. I would presume that the rest of council is still okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion then to approve Resolution 24-R-37 with the stipulation that the loan not be included in on this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution 24-R-37 with the stipulation that the loan not be included. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
No.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries 4-1. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-38.
A resolution authorizing additional cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding Vandelia Bike Way Connector being PID number 111388.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There was significant discussion regarding this item in the workshop earlier today. The city and the Ohio Department of Transportation have previously agreed to partner in the Vandelia Bike Way Connector project. Final plans have been approved by ODOT, and the bids were opened on May 9th, 2024. We received federal congestion mitigation and air quality funding through MVRPC for 80% of the project in an amount up to $2,350,373. Based on estimates that we've received, an invoice from ODOT for our share of the project in the amount of $2,86,196. ODOT's policy is that the local sponsor, this being the city of Vandelia, make payment to them prior to the bid opening. For bids for the project came in higher than expected, as is what occurred with all of these projects in the county. And per the contract that we've entered into ODOT, the city is responsible for the costs, or the local partners are responsible for the costs over the grant amount. We received an email from ODOT after the bid opening requesting an additional $533,930 to be able to move forward with the project. This brings the total local share of the project to $2,620,126, or 52% of the project cost, which will be shared with Five Rivers Metro Parks. Five Rivers Metro Parks has already reimbursed the city for some amounts, and will make an additional payment in 2025. This information came in late last week, and we worked kind of over the weekend to come up with a... to come up with potential solutions and an appropriate recommendation for the city council to consider. This project was originally Five Rivers, their primary project. However, in 2019, they asked the city to be the primary sponsor. This was ostensibly done so that Five Rivers could apply preference points to an application for another project. The city was awarded the CMAC funding in 2020, and the project was awarded an additional supplement of $213,670. Five Rivers' contribution is anticipated at $874,656. You might recall that earlier in the project, a few years back, the design costs were greater than expected, and the city took on an additional $78,000 to move the project forward. Likewise, last year, the city agreed to allow Five Rivers to reimburse the city for its share of the contribution over two years, that being in 2024 and 2025. This was done at the request of Five Rivers to address potential service shortfalls in their budget. Since late last week and over the weekend, we've worked with staff to determine whether to recommend that the project be canceled, postponed, or moved forward, given the additional cost. The city of Vandelia has agreed to share the local contribution for this project with Five Rivers Metro Parks, and the overage is a total of $533,930, meaning that the city's 50% share would be $266,965. I spoke with the CEO for Five Rivers, Karen Hesser. She indicated that Five Rivers would not and was not in a position to be able to contribute additional funds, nor was she able to commit to future payments for the project. This may be because they plan to put a levy on the ballot to address shortfalls. She did indicate that if they were to contribute to this project, that they wouldn't have funding for some maintenance and operation items that are within their budget. And so, what I've looked at is with the Finance Director and the Assistant City Manager and Public Service Director, is the potential of using funds from the street fund. This project includes signal replacements and significant paving in the roadway, which makes it eligible for use of the Street Fund 221, which is funded by a combination of fees, permissive taxes that come, rather than income and property taxes. So, it's distinct from the general fund. ODOT has told the city that we had to advise them, and as the Assistant City Manager reported, this requires us to do an additional supplemental. The solution that I would propose is that each year, the city has budgeted $758,000 or so for the 2024 asphalt resurfacing and curb and sidewalk program in the street fund. And there's also $562,500 from the Police-Fire Street Fund, that's Safe and Stable 332, including $500,000 for asphalt resurfacing. We budgeted a similar amount in 2025. And so, what I would propose is that we supplement the Street Fund 221 to cover the overage. And then, next year, what we do is we allocate congressional funding that we received in the form of $1.33 million in order to conduct a portion of the... in order to conduct the paving of the streets. That gives you the opportunity to potentially even, one, make the street fund whole, but, two, by not paying for next year's roadwork out of it, but also pave approximately $555,000 more. You also have the option to reduce at budget time the 2025 appropriation, should you choose to establish them out of the Safe and Stable Fund, which might help that fund. There's always the option to do some combination of pave more streets, pave the same amount of streets, or conduct those offsets in a different way. And so, you know, I think this is more advantageous than a straight supplemental from the general fund, in that this is probably the best option, should the city council determine that the best option is to advance the project. I appreciate you understanding the constrained timeline and the general guidance that you've given me in this process, and also your recognition that this is kind of ODOT's bid, their estimate that this is based on, and then their timeline. So, although we applied in 2019, we're awarded in 2020, after all of that process, we get to a typical Thursday, and then by Tuesday, they needed to be updated. And here we are the next week, determining whether to move forward and to have this supplemental. So, thank you.
Can I have a motion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think it was a little inappropriate and somewhat negligent not to have informed council when the 12% increase was brought up in February of 2024. The public records request that I made showed communication between staff and the construction people that they knew of the 12% increase.
Thank you very much for that comment, Councilmember Dugan. I noticed that we did not speak about this earlier today when we were on the phone, nor did we in the work session earlier today. But I do think that Assistant City Manager Cron broached this subject, and I would just ask him to go back through LJB's estimate and that relationship with the state and this project in general.
Yeah, back in March, when we were originally asked to pay our share of the project before they bid the project, there was an increase of $310,000, and that was brought up at that time. And it was included in the payment we made, and that was to cover costs for CSX Railroad and their involvement in the project for inspections and their flagging of their trains. The 12% number that you're talking about, that wasn't even a thing until May 9th, when the bids were open. Nobody knew that additional cost. That wasn't until bids were received from the contractors on May 9th. That is when the 12% increase was even... Like I said, we were made aware of, I think, that afternoon on May 9th. And I have the emails from the ODOT. I think that was part of the records request and shown in there.
So, the 12% that they were talking about was the $300,000 additional?
No, no, that $300,000, that was never given a percentage amount. That was just a cost that was shared with us. Well, not shared with us. The information was given to us back in March, and that was from ODOT. And I believe there's a copy of that email in those records as well. That was given to us from Scott Schmidt from ODOT. When they were getting ready to bid the project, CSX noted or notified them that they would need that $310,000, and that was back in, I believe, March or late February.
What was the 12% that was mentioned February 19th?
There was no 12% mentioned in February 19th, because we didn't know a 12% until May 9th.
This is... I'm looking at it, and this was sent to all council members, but there's an email that went out February 21st, and it's, "Hi, Rob, touching base once again before we get final legislation and an invoice," remembering that what I just read to you in the description is that we had a certain amount, the $2 million and change, that we had to make the payment for. That's the invoice that he's referencing. There are two charges, changes to my math below. The first you know is about the additional CMAC funds from MVRPC. That puts us to the good. That's the additional $200,000, going back to this email. The second is the additional costs associated with the railroad agreement for inspection and flagging services. These costs were not captured in Ellis, but have been since added revised estimate based on 12.1% increase from LJB's estimate. We will be with the city. The city will still owe $2 million. And then it breaks that down. And so, I think what Mr. Cron presented on earlier today was to say that, yes, the 12% may exist in two places, but that 12% isn't the same 12% as the bid results, because we wouldn't know until May when the lowest bidder came in or what percentage that it would be. So...
And that may have been... Our consultant, they designed the project, and they prepare a construction cost estimate. They submit that to ODOT. ODOT reviews that, but they do their own estimate on the project based on comparing it with other projects throughout the state. And I think that, and I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that's what the 12% is. ODOT's estimate was 12% over our consultant's estimate. Is that correct? Is that the way that reads?
That's my understanding, sir.
Yeah. But we wouldn't... I mean, that was already incorporated into the first payment we made then, but that wasn't... Nothing to do with the bids. That was just that ODOT thought the project was going to cost more than our consultant did.
Well, and that's what put the ODOT's estimate to 3.8, right?
Yes.
So, you go to 3.8. That's what the estimate is. That's what shows on the bid document that was sent and presented, and is, I'll show right here, the Vandelia Bike Way bids, which is right here. This is in the state's estimate, right? They do this for each of their projects. These are the other Montgomery County ones. And then they show, this is the letting date, which is the date the bids are open, completion date. And then they show, okay, here's everybody who... Here's everybody who bid. And then, like we covered in the other one, here are the percentages that they were above on the other ones that were in Montgomery County that are on this page.
I believe that the number, I think, the 3.8 million was the state's estimate. I believe our consultant, LJB, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, I believe their estimate for the project was 3.5 million, somewhere like that. And so, ODOT, the 12% that you're talking about was what ODOT said. They think it's going to cost 12% more than our consultant did. So, that's what they based our first payment on. But the other 12% is based on the actual bids there, which is the actual construction bid. Yes.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 24-10.
R-38.
24. Resolution, there we go. One up higher. There we go. Yep. Resolution 24-R-38.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver to approve Resolution 24-R-38. Sorry, I just couldn't hear you. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember first.
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. This brings us to ordinances in our first reading, the first one being Ordinance 24-10. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $1,399,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding taxable land acquisition notes, Series 2023, and declaring an emergency in the first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The land acquisition note issued for the acquisition of land for Stone Quarry Crossing Development matures on July 24th, 2024. The total amount due is $1,399,000 in principal plus interest. The 2024 budget included an interest payment of $95,000. The maturity date on the new note will be in July 2025. The debt is scheduled to be paid in 2036.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 24-10 in its first reading.
Your microphone.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 24-10 in its first reading. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-11.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $1,053,000 in anticipation of issuance of bonds to provide monies for the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes. the retirement of the city's outstanding various purpose notes, Series 2023, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The Fire Engine 2016 Bond Anticipation Note issued for a fire engine matures on August 21, 2024. This note was combined with the Fire Ladder Truck 2021 Bond Anticipation Note in order to save on the costs of issuance. The total remaining amount due on the note is $1,241,000 plus interest. The amount of the principal payment for the fire engine is $48,000 and $140,000 for the fire ladder truck. The 2024 budget includes a paydown amount of $48,000 on the outstanding principal due for the fire engine and the $140,000 for the fire ladder truck, plus an interest payment of $63,425. The maturity on the new note will be in August 2025. The debt on the fire engine is scheduled to be paid in full in 2026 and year 2031 for the fire ladder truck.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2411.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Resolution, or, I'm sorry, ordinance 24 dash 11 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
I was just gonna say real quick. That's okay. Is this reflective of what Councilmember Folic had said about paying more on the interest that he wanted? Or principal?
Stone Quarry Crossings.
Oh, that was, okay. Sorry, I mixed those two up. Didn't I? I apologize.
If I, if I may, Councilmember Avalotis Weaver, the, I, I believe that the comment was directed at, in future budget cycles.
Oh.
In, in 2025, we had originally considered putting some of that principal payment for the land acquisition notes in the 2024 budget, and that was removed from the final budget. However, after the budget hearings, however, we will plan to present that to you again in 2025 and moving forward.
Okay. All right. We're just, we're spinning.
Yeah. No, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to channel Councilman Lewis again about that very thing, but it was Councilman Folic that mentioned it. Yeah.
All right. I apologize for mixing that up. Sorry.
But no, you're right. I think, yeah, going forward, we will look at that in the budget, because I think that's a very doable thing, or possibly.
Sorry.
Okay. You're good. Call the roll.
You guys sure?
Okay.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Next, we have an emergency ordinance, that being ordinance 24 dash 09.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during calendar year ending December 31, 2024, and amending ordinance 2328 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, your honor. This item was discussed by the Finance Director earlier today, and in Appendix A, the purposes are set forth for amending the budget. If there's any additional commentary that's necessary, I'd be happy to comment.
All right. And since this is an emergency ordinance, we'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being now closed to public hearing, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2409 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve ordinance 24 dash 09 as an emergency. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion passes 5-0. Next, we have reports from boards and commissions, where we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of February 21st. We also have the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 9th. Are there any comments or questions about them? Being now they stand approved. Next, we have the April 2024 bill listing in the amount of $6,552,570 and 0.06, along with the month, monthly expenses over $25,000. And we've also got the purchase card detail in the amount of $20,804.33. And that brings us to council comments. We will begin with our illustrious law director.
Absolutely nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, your honor. I'd just say thank you for allowing me to participate in the fly-in. I know at the last trip, that resulted in about $1.15 million in external funding for the city. And so that was very good return on investment. I'd like to thank our staff for the good work that they are doing in executing the policy goals and their department goals. It is always great to be able to work with staff in a very respectful and collaborative environment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dugan?
I believe we all got a copy of a, a water bill, water sewer wastewater bill from a, a citizen who is elderly and is having a hard time with the increases that she and, and many other people are having on fixed incomes. And once again, I hope that the council gets to discuss a way to maybe alleviate some of that for these people who are on fixed incomes.
Thank you. Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes. First of all, just thank you for everybody that came and participated in the comments from the citizens. We appreciate that when you guys come and share and give your side of things. It, it really helps us to participate. Number two, I wanted to congratulate Aaron Messinger from the Rec Center. He got proclamation or something from, oh my gosh, State Representative Plummer for community efforts for the city of Vandelia. And he posted that on his LinkedIn, and I thought that was really cool. Also, I want to remind everybody that we have an event. Commander Mark, and I am too afraid to mess up his last name, so I will not say it, but he is from the American Legion here in Vandelia. There is a Memorial Day ceremony at 11 o'clock at the Rec Center, at the Veterans Memorial. And then also, if you want to help decorate the flags of veterans who have passed away, you can meet at the American Legion at 9 o'clock on Saturday morning. And that is it. Thank you.
Councilmember Fairst?
Two additions. The city did a shred day. Oops, I'm sorry. City did a shred day on Friday, and had Community Paint Day for another mural on Saturday. And both of those were well-received, and there's great pictures on our website if you want to go take a look. Also want to excuse Councilman Lewis and Councilman Folic from all meetings this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion passes 5-0. Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Well, just to further the painting of the mural, I tried out my Enter Picasso on the wall, as well as my grandchildren. I think that my grandchildren outdid me. But it was a great time, well-received, as you mentioned.
Yeah.
And a nice addition to the, the building, the look of the building. There's been so many comments of the one over at the other, the other side of the street, at that building with the Bs. And so anxious to see what, what comes out of this one with the theme. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And I have no further comments for this evening, so this meeting is adjourned.